Stand. What is this meeting given in the answer of by public? Posting, city administration will be shown by the certificate of posting. And this this meeting simultaneously given to the president. Availability of the agenda is communicated. All proceedings hereafter when the big office convening meetings. This meeting is being made. Means not the appeal. Any person wishing to address the council, we do so by standing recognized podium. Sign sign in sheet. Get it. Stadium name, organization, impression of person represent before you begin speaking. Thank you. Here.
In here.
Here.
Hold me.
Here. 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 Alright, uh. First. I didn't want our long afternoon meeting. Just be your. Five, six hundred. First up is saying it's precious.
I am helping power. Like director. So. I know I asked. Ask here. Yeah, I know I got asked with him. Now I'm asking for twelve thousand. Double. But. We've just had a lot of increasing. As is everybody, but I got a rent went up four hundred dollars a month. Uh building. And there's just like I had to. Lay a lay a staff member off. Because I don't have the funds to pay for them. We lost um longer term shelter options that we had. The city. So that's a resource that we're struggling to provide clients that need it. Um due to funding. We've got. Um and we're just struggling. In general, we provide referrals to resources for grant assistance and utility assistance. Stuff like that, and we're finding that even those referring agencies that we typically use are also out of funding. So we're stuck trying to. Um up with that money out of our own budget. Or be very creative. With how we help people. Right. The reason I provided this is I wanted you guys to know how hard I'm trying. I have applied for almost two million dollars in funding. And I have three hundred and sixty five years. At this time. So. And is that that's over a couple of years. So some of those grants are three year grants, majority of them are just for this year. So like. The O B W grant is would be a three year grant if we aren't approved. And that's that's a rule grant, you have to be rule or to even get that grant. And you have to partner with other agencies and we have partnered with this uh law police department. The key county attorney and the garden family attorney. And what that means is that we can help provide some funding for some things for those agents please. Whether that be like a victim advocate advocate through county attorney's office. Um. Or. Equipment. Equipment. Things like that. Enforcement. Um. We're trying to help other agencies and programs that we work closely with as well. If we if we can. We know we're all in the same boat, but and we work very well with Casa and Women's Resource or. I think what it's called. Always. You know, we we share resources with each other, we share like. We have diapers and they need a we. Please come take some, I mean, we don't. You know, like the order money to our most. But. And like it stated in here, you know, um Pat's essentially asking for a thousand dollars a month, which. When you put that into perspective, that's not gonna pay most rent around here for one month. That's not, or it'll just pay for six or seven nights of shelter um for ten counseling sessions. I know we are huge of providing counseling sessions. Um of the ninety eight people served in Ogallala City limit. Um. Within since January, um a lot of counseling even and that's for entire families. It's not just the victim, it could be the victim and their children who have witnessed. Um. Some victimization, some abuse. Um or children that are the victim themselves and we are paying for counseling for their parents because of what they've had. So, yeah. You know, traumatized, so it's not just one person that we're serving, it's usually families that we're serving. Um and with that cost. Do you guys have any questions?
What's your an your annual operating budget?
My annual operating budget, it is around three hundred thousand dollars. Before I do any services.
Does Chris Vale help write grants for your organization?
No, I write all my. We can't afford to pay for somebody. And I don't care that she would charge, I know Chris very well, but. Um. The problem is that a lot of our grants are different and what the deployments are and stuff. So. It's just it's just a matter of, and I don't know how many federal grants. Chris deals with. You deal with a lot.
All the grants that haven't you haven't heard nothing on it? Are you thinking that probably nothing's gonna happen?
No, like I've gotten some emails from some of these people and they've said that they were hoping to have a determination. Nation by one of them was by the end of July. But the due to the overwhelming number of applications they received, that they are now looking at maybe the end of September. To have a decision.
Yeah, see. For your your county request, all six counties are thirty four thousand. Can you help me break that down like for a count?
So asked for Keith County for twenty thousand. Um I have asked. Arthur County for five hundred, because they are a small county.
Okay, when we can just say Keith County for for twenty thousand, that'd be twelve Ogallala eight county or?
No, twenty from the county.
Oh, twenty from the county.
Yeah.
So so the city's funding, Ogallala's funding would be in addition to the that.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So do the other cities like Durant and funny you?
I've never asked the city of Grant because I wasn't really sure. I honestly don't know a whole lot about city government, so I didn't even really think about them having a city. Council as well.
Just like us.
Like I'm just.
So it is Arthur.
Yeah, so I asked the city of Oshkosh for funding. And I've never done that before, that was this was the first time this year. So. I think some of this is that. Why I did not ask more cities is because having to have it in in May and at the time I was currently working on. The O B W rule grant for five hundred thousand dollars. So trying to balance both those things. Was difficult.
You don't see the financial numbers here, would you be able to forward those over to us when you get a chance to?
The financial numbers as in my total.
Yes, offer, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Like financial statement, your income expense.
Mm hmm, I can do that. Yeah.
So curiosity, what did you ask for the county uh last year, what did they?
Twenty thousand.
Is that the dig of that?
They gave us, they gave me eighteen. So. I was gonna ask for more. But I don't know. Except why I didn't.
But I think from what I remember, the last time you guys are up in services over the last five years, every year it exponentially goes up quite a bit.
Yes. And that's. Is that? We're not running out of victims, but we're running out of time, we're running out of money and we're running out of staff. You know, I I mean, my staff are gonna are burning out, I'm burnt out, if I wanna be honest. And we're funding, you know. Think our city's growing, we have a lot of growth happening, the casino coming in, people moving in. I think these types of things are gonna be more prevalent, happening more often.
So when it comes to services to walk us through as much as you can on some, when they come in and ask for. Uh you know, food and shelters based on an intake of the family, right? They're not just coming in and asking for food assistance?
Sometimes, but they have to they have to be they have to meet our criteria, so we do, we get a lot of homeless people. We get a lot of people that are low income that can't afford to get foods for themselves. They come to us because there's nowhere else to go. They've already been to HHS and been told they can't help them, food pantry that, you know, they just went there not too long ago and. And even though they don't fit our criteria, we still, as we refer them to the red boxes or we tell, you know, we give them resources. Tell me to call churches for help, but. Even though those people don't meet our criteria, we never just turn somebody away and say good luck. So we are providing services to people that don't fit our criteria. But not financially, we're not financially. Um and every client interaction is different depending on their needs, some of them don't need shelter. Uh because of our funding cut or funding cuts, our criteria on that is typically, are you in immediate danger? Would, you know, put us in a shelter in the past when we had a longer term shelter. It could be like, okay, you need out of this situation, we can put you some somewhere safe until we find something more permanent. And now it's very immediate need. Um but we offer a variety of different services, whether that be paying for counseling, providing household supplies, food, personal hygiene items. Um one on one education, we try to do outreach all of our counties, provide educational opportunities for students at schools and children. Um. There's just a lot, every every client's different of what their needs are in their current situation, so it's kind of hard to give a. We go to court, we go to court with our clients if they want us to, we sit in on depositions for sexual assault. Cis with protection orders, um pro se divorce filings, custody filings, um provide referrals for. Bus tickets. We come across that often, people for some reason. Get shot in Ogallala a lot. Um and whether that's because they got an argument on the interstate and someone just dropped them off in Ogallala. Um you know, so we do spend time and money on sheltering that person until we can get them transportation to where they need to go. They support resources.
So generally, how long you, you know, shelter or service a client?
Twenty four forty eight hours. But serving a client.
Yeah, I mean.
That can be years. Literally.
So so someone could go in for. You know, I guess you were talking about food or or, I mean, they. You can just keep providing that to it for years.
So. Once you're. Once you're a client, you're always a client of Skip. We do require that you are checking in with us, that you're meeting with us on a regular basis to continue receiving services. Um obviously, say you had a domestic violence incident a year ago, we're not gonna still keep paying your rent a year from now. We'll definitely by that point hopefully have had some budgetary conversations and stuff where that person is able to. Um. Be more self sufficient, however, um if they found themselves in another circumstance. That there was an incident of domestic violence, we would continue to serve that person. Um a lot of ongoing services are like the support group, counseling, um. Just additional, yeah. Just listening a lot of times. And then court cases, I mean, we have court cases that started three years ago that are still going. So following those, keeping up with that, answering clients' questions. Um. That's kind of an ongoing thing that keeps us in touch with clients for a longer period of time. The food we have is donated, it's been donated to us by people, the majority of it. We do have, sometimes I'll get a dinner donation for a thousand dollars and they they'll say I want this to go, I want to eat two food or for floating or whatever. And so then that's what we air market for. But the majority of the food we have is donated. And we do have a couple of freezers, so we've had meat donated to us and then we can do like a box of hamburger helper. And a thing of ground beef and, you know, to try and get them enough to do a meal. But. And we don't like feed the entire family for, you know, several years, it's just to get you through this little short period. Because we really work on self sufficiency. Um. That's. We don't want a client coming back year after year looking for financial resources because we want them to be independent, self sufficient.
Do you see quite a few repeat victims?
Mm hmm.
So I'm looking on page two here at all of the numbers, bottom left corner, it's all added up. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so hundred and fifty clients served thus far this year.
Mm hmm.
And then seven hundred and thirty six services provided and by services that could be a counseling session, that could be going to a court, that could be any number. Uh giving some food, some diapers.
And I'm gonna be honest, that number is is probably a lot higher, we have a new database that we're still trying to get all the keys worked out, so.
Which number is higher?
The total number of services, so this has not been clients, but the number of services.
So does that mean all these numbers are incorrect?
No, no, no.
Just.
No, what I'm saying is like where it says number of services, I'm sure the girls have provided a lot more than what is showing on here because of the new database and how you have to enter things. I don't know that every service is being captured.
But the clients would be very accurate.
The clients would be very accurate.
Is the state covered with organizations like yours?
Yes, there are, every county in the state of Nebraska has a has a program.
Is it required, do they have to have a program?
Yes.
So so then who's who requires it?
The state of Nebraska Department, so Department of Health and Human Services. And then the federal government also requires it under the Family Violence Prevention Services Act. So both of those give us a small amount of money, I mean, it's it's pretty good size of money, but. Um it's split, I get like fifty thousand from the state and thirty thou- thirty or forty thousand from. The federal government and it's combined in that one brand.
So that's that ninety four one thirty, okay, so that's that's HHS and then federal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So and what's this formula grant, how that's determined is there's a set a dollar amount of money that the state gets. On both PIPSA and HHS, so they divide that in half and half of that is divided out on twenty programs. The other half is determined based on population and square miles covered. So we are, we are not the lowest paid program in the state, we are the second to lowest paid program in the state. Because we do not have a very high population, we have lots of square miles, which helps us, but we do not have a high population, so that hurts us.
Yeah, and we also be heading lower population, we have less available services, which is what the state misses. Again, Omaha has a lot more services to go to than Ogallala. And really based on the total what they give you, if you break that out based on, let's say, seven service areas, which includes other service areas. That's thirteen and a half thousand, that's it, that they're providing. For them to do everything that they do every year.
Thank you.
You're trying to stay on on schedule here.
No, I'm sorry.
We know that's your, that's that's fine, uh. I don't know that we would have a decision for you at this time, but. Are there any?
Anything is appreciated.
Yeah, I I think that. Go to those other municipalities, go to those counties, uh you know, I I would. I would assume that to provide services here in Ogallala, it's a little more cost effective since your staff are here, you don't have the mileage. But if you're gonna go to Arthur or, you know, to Garden County. Or even Grant, I mean, you have mileage, you know, windshield blind, it's a little expensive.
Yeah.
This president last year's uh requests and allocation.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I have six thousand stuck in my head for some reason, sorry.
And and just because with how the process works, it usually is presentation, we'll ask for additional items like the financials. And then we'll circle back around as a group as we look through the financial numbers on, so just let you know what that process looks like. Uh if you could also provide, if there's a list of other things that, you know, you need in general from the community, like, hey, it was great, we got diaper system. Those are things that we can also work with, uh Jeff Hadley at the paper, maybe try to get some information out there to the public beyond what's on the website. Do just for some exposure, see what can be done. Can't promise anything is his side, but I know a lot of the information he likes to have, cause then he can put together stuff and for community purpose.
Thank you.
And then more comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. You're gonna do a wonderful service.
Thank you.
Yep. W R G Western Resources Group. And how you doing today?
Good, you guys?
Doing good.
Well, we had four twenty five was on our deal, uh last year was fifteen. We're kind of just giving the same thing that. What we went through last year, you know, picking up the containers and stuff in town and recycling the. Two locations that we have, um we did a community cleanup last fall. Uh or the spring that went pretty decent, I think, for the most part. Um. Planning on doing another one September eighth through the twelfth. Is the dates that were chosen correct?
Yes, for the councils, that that's outside of the request. So what we do is we reimburse W R G for the roll off tonnage that goes to the landfill.
Yes, it is a city cleanup that is hosted at W R G.
It's actually, it's actually a wash because they they bill us for the roll off. They they get billed for the roll off, they they pay it, we pay them and we reimburse.
Right. Uh.
We got a problem beyond the request.
Correct.
And this was the actual ownerships that we're kind of looking at, possibly with W R G to coincide with area cleanup in town for. Um. Western.
Yeah, except because of roll offs we were putting out, we're getting abused and then there's a lot of recyclables that weren't getting diverted. Uh I think you did free containers of metal that were diverted for the last cleanup.
And then we.
How much cardboard or other stuff?
Off the top of my head, it was right around fourteen hundred pounds of plastic too that was inserted out of that, that, you know, in the previous cleanups would have went to the landfill, so. Yeah, um but yeah, as far as like our containers and stuff in town at the rec center, Y M C A now, and then. Um Family Dollar, you know, continuing that and that's been pretty good. We're looking at there, there was some money granted to first our recycling for rural recycling. So I've been talking with them to try to get a few more containers and possibly. Have a couple other. Sites in town, um. We've hired someone for a public education and stuff like that, and we've got a lot of feedback on, you know, what about something out south? Or something on the north side of town, so unfortunately those roll offs are about nine thousand dollars apiece. So we're going to apply for some of that and hopefully. Within the next six months or so, we'll know and be able to get a few more containers and figure out another spot. One thought was. The park up by the hospital where the community garden used to be. There's that open spot that's not really being utilized, we can put a couple containers there, so.
Yeah, I I would want to see him out there on.
You know. Well, yeah, we're just snowballing like ideas, I mean, and it'll be something, you know, if if we are approved, then we get it then, you know, come back and have a conversation with. Kevin and figure out what a great spot would be.
Yeah. Uh there there was some discussion. At the county commissioners. With Keith County, keep Keith County beautiful and W R G. And who's providing what service and and, you know, why is why is W R G asking county for additional money? And and I I talked to a couple of the county commissioners. And and their comment was, you know, this is keep Keith County beautiful, so you know, whatever. The county is funding for, you know, keep Keith County beautiful, it should be the entire county, you know, including the cities, uh Ogallala, rural Paxton. I understand with you or where to be additional services, so just for the city for a community provision or nuisance things, I mean, that's. Let's see.
So what it kind of stems from is it's it's hard to. Turn someone off or away from the cleanup if they have sixty eight county plates, we feel like there's quite a bit of stuff coming in town from the lake. So split the cost with the city on those cleanups. Um. Yeah, but I just gotta zoom ball from there, so.
Yeah, I. That's tough. Dude. Uh. I've heard, you know, some people. Stockpile it in their garage for a year till we have cleanup.
Uh yeah, it it happens, I mean, it's also with. Um the spring cleanup to keep Keith County Beautiful does too, I mean, you get. You get a lot of people that are just kind of sad whenever they come in there, I mean, that's what the cleanups for. Um. But with where the city was fully funding. That their spring cleanup, you know, it's hard to keep. The out of town people, I mean, Paxton has sixty eight county plates, sure, it's hard to judge when they're coming in there, so.
So between last year's, uh last year, we gave fifteen thousand, the request this year is twenty five. What would you do with the additional ten thousand? Or how would it affect you if you not receive it?
Um it would be on the extra cleanup sites and stuff if if we get it. And or if not, we could use that extra money to purchase. You know, a couple roll offs and make another site. We we've had a ton of people comment on. Like out south, like. Out by the interstate, there's people that live out there that, you know, have to drive into town to recycle, so.
We kind of have nothing north other than your location, right?
No, yeah, that's it.
To get kind of a dead zone to the north as well.
Yeah, so, yeah, right downtown here, like I said, rec center and Family Dollar and then us up there, which, I mean, we're kind of. Out in the middle of nowhere, I guess you'd say.
You know what, you guys do a great job of picking them up, they're they're not, rarely do I ever see them overflowing or.
The trucks are running. He's giving me that. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try, I mean, we got a part time guy that runs the truck and then, you know, if he's not there, I can show him as well, so. You know, and I mean. Every time they pick up, we go through with two guys, I got two guys on the floor, that's it. So forty three communities that come through, they're sorted by two guys.
Two million pounds of cardboard? Two guys?
Two guys.
So. Think you guys are doing a great job.
Well, thank you.
You guys have a big operation for very little staff.
Yeah, so we are the second largest recycling center in the state of. Yeah, so we are the second largest recycling center in the state of Texas. We will never be able to beat first.
And it looks pretty darn nice, dude. You really. Cleaned it up the last couple of years, then. And it wasn't bad before, but this.
We tried very hard to keep the yard clean and. Uh you know, keeping the yard clean keeps. People out there wanting to run around and pick around and take stuff home, so.
Or using and dumping.
Yes.
Are you part of the meeting in Carney?
Next month. Uh I will not be able to because I have to help up Ron and I do. But I believe Jayden Cooper is trying to attend. See if there's any other, I'm sure everybody else way out the meeting is also gonna be networking for dollars and.
Do you have the submit a copy of that, just the whole financials that go through? Or do shoot those over to Jane and she'll put it in her packet for us.
Right, I don't.
Anybody have any other questions?
Perfect, thanks.
Take a tour and we'll show you what we do.
It's a pretty neat facility, see, I haven't been up there.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
I'm there every week. Right, Keith County Housing Development Corporation.
Just here from five to five fifteen. There are two different ones, are they?
Uh they should all be the same.
I wasn't sure if it was separated for a reason.
Said they are the same.
Yes, those are.
Is that right?
It doesn't stop when she gets started.
We appreciate you being here too, Mary, as we know, it's always easy logistically, but.
Thank you guys.
Always love seeing you.
For your great, my entourage. Okay, what you guys are receiving, uh on page one. Is just a snapshot of some highlights of housing development projects facilitated by the Housing Development Corporation in recent years. And those included thirtieth street, um housing developments several years ago, the Housing Development Corporation purchased some lots. And and were able to sell those to developers at a discounted rate, um to develop homes along that street. Seven new homes have been built and one um is forthcoming, we set a timeline with the owner of the property. To start construction. And by September one, and so we're hoping that 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 will happen or we will get that lot back and be able to build a home on it, so we have eight new homes up there in the last several years. And three oh one East End Street is a vacant lot that was purchased by the Housing Development Corporation, um we built a new home on, we used our N I P A. Our first housing funds to do that. And also the middle school project, which you guys are fully aware of. And our carrying costs there um to date are listed without properties. We're able to um absorb those carrying costs because of fundraising efforts that we receive from private donations. Just, I wanted to note that. Rural Works Housing Fund, that is something that um the Housing Development Corporation oversees and manages. Um some of the operational expenses that we see every year, we have an annual review cost that is required. Um we have to have a third-party review done. That costs about six thousand dollars, we have to do that from twenty twenty-nine to satisfy the requirements of the grant. And homes built with Rural Works Housing Fund support, there have been six completed, one under construction within the city limits of Oglala. Since January of twenty twenty-two, that's when we closed our first um loan. The Housing Development Corporation also incurs a thousand dollars per month in um operational expenses. And two dates since nineteen ninety-seven, and this is a spreadsheet that Jerry Stinky started. And there's almost a fourteen million dollar investment uh in Keith County and housing. I did not go through and separate those one hundred plus line items out between Oglala and Keith County. I just put the full, the full number of facilitated investment. So our budget request this year from City of Oglala is ten thousand dollars. In the past, we have received seventy-five hundred, that was a request last year. Uh we were granted twenty-five hundred, and so the the reason for the increase is to kind of offset the difference from last year. Um so we do not have to dip in to any of our reserves from our housing funds in order to cover the cost of those third-party reviews. Uh as you see on page two, the highlighted portion, this is a list of our expenses. From January one to the end of June for twenty twenty-five, the highlighted portion is what um we would be requesting funds to cover. The outside contract services, obviously that's going to continue on a monthly basis through the end of twenty twenty-five, so that number will increase. And then on the third page, you see a balance sheet. And through the end of June of this year. Everything highlighted, there are restricted accounts. What does restrict restricted mean? We can only use those for certain things. So the H I F account, Housing Incentive Fund account. Those ones can only be used to support our Housing Incentive Growth Fund, where we award four to eight thousand dollars incentive to spec builders. Our N I P A account and the Rural Workforce Housing Fund account. Can only be used for our revolving loan fund. And then also the L B eight forty, you guys are aware, those are restricted funds. So everything highlighted there is restricted, our other assets, those are Rural Works Housing Fund notes receivable. And you see everything else listed below. Any question?
Because I've done a great job of raising funds over the years, it's been amazing what our meeting has been able to do through your guys' activities.
Yeah, thank you. It's a it's a shared vision, all those actions was twenty twenty vision.
So are you doing any activity in Paxton or rural?
Uh we have not had any loans in Paxton, um. Trying to think what we closed, it's been several years, several years, we've had inquiries from rural, but no.
I didn't know if you were, if you had any involved in those whole faster projects there.
We did, but that was several years ago when we did our last.
Well, we're chipping away a little bit at it all the time. Getting get overwhelming.
We do have um a housing board meeting on Thursday, we have three contracts for consideration for.
Questions, comments from council?
Do you do you have a question in the county too?
We do, um last year the county um was gracious enough to give us seventy-five hundred and we requested ten thousand from them this year. I have not.
Two thousand.
Ten thousand. Also, um our requests are the same as the city.
Thank you for supplying the financial information too, makes it easier.
Any other question?
Thank you very much, Mary, you did a great job.
Anybody?
How do you say notice somebody carrying a baby?
Okay, if you guys come up with any questions, don't forget to hit the.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary, did you sign in?
I did.
Okay.
All right, we'll be right along, uh we have anyone here from the Keith County Historical? Yeah, Keith County Historical Society, right.
That would be me, I guess, I'm Rod Wolf. President of Keith County Historical Society, I believe that we made an application back in May. Asked requesting for funding for the historical society. Our expenses have kind of went out of the chart this year, and I know you guys have a. Extra hard job balancing all the all the financing on the top of the pin there, but anyway. We um. Looking to put new refurbished windows in the historical side of the mansion on the hill, which is our main. Property there. And uh Joe Brown, one of our board members, has been in contact with uh a gentleman out of Carney. Who does historical restoration, and that's in order to keep the building under the historical restoration part, we'd have to do these. Crazy things with the windows, and this guy seems to know how to do it and has done it with a number of projects in the past, so. He's looking at seventeen windows at a thousand bucks a window. Which is crazy, but anyway, uh on top of that, uh. We just got done acquiring the lot to the west of our of the mansion there, west of the old house of bottles. Um lady passed away and we were able to negotiate with her grandson to get a. Get the lot for twenty-five hundred dollars, but it had a forty-five hundred dollar lien on it, then we had to pay five thousand dollars to. Get the trailers and the campers and all the trees off the lot, so we're looking at twelve thousand dollar expenditure there that we. Really hadn't had in our budget for this particular year. Other than that, we've seemed to keep up with uh. The admissions, we bring in about four four thousand dollars a year with people looking at the mansion, coming to tour it. We pay seventy-one hundred dollars out every year for tour guides, so that doesn't quite match up. But we have some wonderful volunteers like Rod back there and and quite a few on the board, Tomas England is is the. Unofficial city historian, I think, and he does a heck of a job for us, but uh. No, we would, we would like to request uh. City to uh entertain a twenty thousand dollar stipends to get us get us through the window project and helping helping. Defray some of the costs that we had in acquiring the lot and cleaning up that area up there.
I missed it when you said it, you said seventeen windows, you replaced it, how much of these?
Seven thousand dollars a window, thousand dollars a windows, what this guy is estimating now, he hasn't even been on the property yet. He just take, we just sent pictures to him, so. Who knows what he's gonna come up with.
Full replacement or just repairs?
I'm not sure, I'm like you say. They they need to be done, I mean, he's gotta keep the, he's gotta keep the historical nature of the window, so I assume he's just replacing a page. And keeping all the old wood and everything like that that can be salvaged.
I bet, I bet he's rebuilding. For that cost, when, I mean, this was ages ago, we did a. Uh Housing Reha Project, Gotthard with a home that was considered. These historically significant. We we could have got windows for fourth, what it costs.
Oh, yeah.
The. You know, strip them. And they probably got lip paint, you know, and so you gotta deal with that, it, no, I it's it's crazy. Honestly, doesn't seem unreasonable, the cost of windows these days, yeah.
Ron, well, I've got you uh on the spot.
Yeah.
Did you get title to that trailer that we have in town? We have no legal recourse to keep that trailer.
We're working on it, we're working on getting the title to that trailer, but it might have to be a replacement titles as best we can do.
We need to get that out of there.
Okay, okay.
You're on it. Setting aside these these windows for this, you know, one-time project. What would you feel you would request from the city annually just for funding and operations? If if we didn't have the seventeen thousand for the windows this year, let's let's set that aside.
We'd be more more than happy to settle with our five thousand dollars that you provided us the last few years. I've only been on the board for two and a half years, so I'm not, I'm not the. I don't know how far that goes back.
Yeah.
But that that'd be more in our realm to help us offset the cost of our tour guides and things like that. And uh and we get rent from the city, obviously, with the ambulance building, which helps out to help pay that and. All the other. Utilities and things that go on with a house that's hundred years old almost.
Yeah. On that note, if. If we build a different ambulance barn, how does that affect you guys losing that rent?
No, that uh that property will probably be for sale unless we decide to do something with a museum there. And like we're. We're light years away from trying to raise enough money for that unless we have a donor or something comes. That'd be, try to rent that building to somebody else or sell.
Okay.
Sell that property, is what we've talked about.
You don't have a use for it.
Well, we would if we were gonna put a museum there.
Sure.
That that was the, that was the uh goal, you know, two, three years ago, and then we saw the prices of what it costs to do that and. We just don't have the funds to. We haven't had the fundraising to do that, this year we got. Right, right at seventy-nine hundred dollars from the big give, which was about a half of what we got last year, so. I mean, went down a little bit on the fundraising end of it, but you know, every everything's a little bit uh.
What is the rent that the city pays?
Fourteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, I'm on.
Looks like that five thousand goes clear back to twenty sixteen.
Does it?
Yeah.
But I can't put that on there, you wouldn't read that spreadsheet.
So.
There's no inflation, so like I say, if you don't put that in there, then don't worry about it. No, that's fine. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to.
Guys, have a good one.
Next time I'll bring.
Sound electric. Uh I've heard that no one from. Keep Keith County Beautiful is one. Oh, okay, I, okay. Keep Keith County Beautiful.
All right, thank you. I'm not as pretty as. Chris, I I don't know what you're gonna do by the time, I'm sorry, I didn't turn it on. I need to sign in.
Yes, please.
I got three minutes?
No, you, we're ahead of schedules, you have plenty of time.
Okay, I'll try to do it.
So if you wanna throw out some limericks, things like that, or.
I don't think there's a lot of Rob wisdom out there, but you just met the one that has some wisdom. There's probably at least four rods in this town. That I can think of, that, you know all of that. I'm Rob Brzanek and I'm here representing Keith Keith County Beautiful. Uh an affiliate of Keith Nebraska Beautiful and a part of Keep America Beautiful. We are uh for forty years as a locally started organization. I assume you have all this material in front of you, good, good, okay, uh it was called Make Oglala Beautiful. Or went by Mob years and years ago, some of you were here. Uh many of you are are new to that, missed out on that great amount of fun that we had back in the sixties and seventies. Creating uh new names, but Mob was kind of a fun thing to throw around for a while. So what I'm asking for is a funding of whatever the. The bottom line can come to, but we we are up against it like everybody else is, I realize you guys are part of that. Uh, we have requested fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, which if you look at what happened this last year, Chris was trying to explain it. Uh, the numbers are we, we get most of our funding, almost all of it, from grants that, that Chris are, Chris Vail are, that the director writes. Uh, we have been pretty much accepted statewide as the leading organization in Keith Nebraska Beautiful. It's nice to have one of our, uh, board members, Darrell Sizney, sitting on that state board as well. Uh, keeps us informed of what's going on. Uh, since the. First grade kids won the number one community cleanup in the, and our collection of aluminum cans is what it was at the time. Uh, I don't, how, how old are you in first grade? Six or seven, something like that? Uh, that young lady is now working on a secondary or third level degree. I'm not sure if, uh. If Miss Noldy is doing a masters or a doctorate, anybody know?
You don't know?
Yeah, she's, she's working with the, uh. Nebraska Ray Sidling Council, uh, which, uh, our executive director is also an executive member of that board. Uh, what we try to do here is, is very simple. Uh, we try to make this a little better place to live, a little cleaner, a little greener, a little less litter lying around. So we do a lot of cleanups that are all paid for by grants that are, um. And the people who are doing the cleanup don't get paid anything. Maybe they get a bottle of water. And a chance to visit a friend for a couple hours while they're doing some work down by the interstate. But, uh, we did eight cleanups, eight, eight effective cleanups in the last eleven months. And I, I just couldn't believe that. Go back and check that out, it sounded like an impossible feat, but. Um, a lot of different individual groups, including us old guys and ladies in the Ogallala Garden Club, cleaning up a little bit at Boot Hill every year. And we have a grant that pays, we, Keith County Beautiful has a grant that pays those individual groups. Uh, a stipend for cleaning up that area, whether it's, uh, the PEO or, or the, uh. The gentleman, uh. Keith County, Keith County Cavalry Chorus, there we go. Uh, they've done a lot, but the kids at the FFA and the Paxton Crew. And we have a lot of, uh, individual groups that are rewarded for doing a good civic job with a, a stipend that. In our case, the Garden Club uses it to offer another scholarship. Because that's, we end up getting somewhere between five, it's been three hundred fifty, maybe five hundred dollars, a little bit more in the future here. Based on what the grant's, uh, approval is. So what I'm asking for is whatever support we can get to continue to do the good work, keeping Ogallala and, and the entire county. Uh, clean. You know what happens when an area gets blighted. It stays blighted and gets worse and drives in additional community areas. Uh, we don't wanna see that at our entrances and that's why one of our cleanups is right at I eighty. Uh, we meet at Casey's and usually in the spring. I think we had nine people this year, uh, that were able to get there. In between other cleanups and other events, but, uh, we still got, I believe it was thirty-eight. I put them on my trucks. I'm pretty sure it's close to forty bags of trash, full, full trash bags, just from the south. The, the north side, Casey's, that area, and a little bit over towards McDonald's. That's a lot of stuff and I mean, it's, it's a lot of stuff. It's bending over, picking stuff up. And we are trying very hard to get, uh, people that are under the age of eighty, uh, to volunteer. Because I'm getting, I'm, I am ancient and I'm getting older than the dirt and doing it fast. I'm on hyper alert now, trying not to become a hundred before the year's over. Uh, we still like what we're doing and I think we're doing a good job, but the, our, our job is to educate the kids. So they can educate their parents, so they'll help with the beautification and the winter cleanups. And it's been, it's been very effective. We are statewide rec- recognized leader. And we've won national awards every year that we've been in, in this, in this last, uh, twenty-year cycle. So we, and invite you to come up. I know that a couple of you were here just recently to, to take a look at the office. And you can't help but be impressed with the wall that's covered with na- national awards. It's, uh, it's not, I'm not writing because I've, I've just, I've just been a member of the board for a while. Uh, Jerry and Laura are here with me and in support of a guy who doesn't know how to stop talking, so. I will do that now. If you have questions, please ask them before I continue to ramble.
What did we give you last year?
I believe, uh, that.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five.
Seventy-five hundred, we got twenty-five.
We got a third of what we needed and that unfortunately, that's, that's in your document, but. Unfortunately, what happens with the way we do our funding, uh, it's all based on matching funds, so. You didn't give us an additional five thousand, which hurt our budget by a total of ten thousand dollars. And it may be, uh, tough to understand this year with mergers at the state level, uh, but we now have something called DWE. Uh, Department of Water, Education, or Water, Environment and Energy. So the NRD got sucked up by Department of Energy already and. There seems to be some additional consolidation going on and that may, that may actually free up money at some point.
What's your annual budget?
Anybody help me with that one? I don't know what it is. It's not on my document either.
Would you be able to get Chris to give us the financial numbers? Cause I, she didn't include them again this year. So if you can get her to send us a copy of the financials.
That is, that was asked for a couple of years ago.
We asked, we're at like every year, three years now, and still are not seeing financials.
Okay.
And that's what a lot of times impacts stuff, because we have to be able to match up funding requests based on financial numbers.
Sure, I guess you guys know she's.
Not just being the messenger, so.
I have to shoot me, that's fine.
What did you ask these year? What did you ask the county for?
Again, I think that was, was that fifteen?
No, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's right. If you just include that in with the financials too, because then we can get that information.
Absolutely, it's, it's available. I just, I, I knew I was gonna be here. I just don't know how many other questions I might have to do it, to pick her out.
Uh, and I mean, forgive me too, if this is beyond, uh, scope on this rod. How many Ogallala cleanups, Ogallala only cleanups, not county, just Ogallala have been done? I know I've responded.
That's done with the kids, that's done with the kids in the I eighty interstate, there's a number of different groups, uh, besides North Sprouse. And, uh, the Garden Club at, uh, at the, uh, at Boot Hill, which is. Not a big deal, but it does look nice when it's cleaned and no trash for the tourists when they first show up in the summer. Uh.
I would guess about five or six.
I was gonna say six, that's probably right. Very close. You'd like that, uh, in your, in your follow-up note as well, this is how many Ogallala cleanups we did and this is what it impacted. Yeah, yeah.
Is that we can show impact of dollars for the Ogallala community?
Excellent. We have two ladies with memories, so it should be between the two of them helping. They really never get that for you.
Like, it, and I, I think it was last week or week or whatever, WRG and I believe Keith, Keith County Beautiful. Were at a commissioners meeting where WRG was asking for funding, you know, for an Ogallala cleanup or whatever it was. And from what Kevin told me, that, you know, the city did not direct WRG to go in and ask for the funds. I mean, WRG. Took it upon themselves to ask for those funds for a county. Uh, but then again, I, I talked to a couple of county commissioners and they said. Well, it, you know, it's a county operation, we're funding it, so they should be providing services to, to the city, so.
Uh. There are communities, uh, smaller than Ogallala and in our part of the state that, uh. Where, where their, their organization receives twenty-five thousand dollars from the city each year as their operational budget. I don't know if they said that's because they got too much money in their account or because they don't know how to write grants. But most, most of our financing is done through grant writing, so it doesn't hurt. That most of that money is already, it's, it's already been received as, as tax. Given to the state and then doled back out. It's nice to be able to get some of that back and if you know how to write the grant, get the money.
Rod, do you know that total grant, honey?
That you did. Why shouldn't it be even coming? What's the, do we happen to know the total of the grants that we received last year? Cause I don't have that number in my head.
I didn't want to bring my book.
See, I mean, I.
We'll find out the questions and write them out and we'll get you all.
Just send us financial statement.
Financial statement.
Yep.
From the cleanup store in Ogallala.
Yep.
Yep, and that's, I mean, yeah, and, and probably a little detail to the financial statement. So.
Okay.
It's been a little sparse sometimes, making sure that it's a full, it's easy to count for everything.
Okay.
It's, uh, what do you guys normally see at board would be easy.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Alright.
And Rod, I know you've been on that, I mean, the new ladies as well have been on there forever. You guys have put a lot of walking miles on shoes, cleaning up stuff and a lot of cold rainy days, hot days, so very much appreciate you guys.
Well, these two have done, uh, they've been on a long time. I took a break. I think Darrell Sizney mentioned that, uh, we used to have our meetings right here. And, uh. Uh, it's been quite, quite a while, but Darrell and I both came back on the board. Uh, I just loved it because he said, uh. I guess the two of us are, are also recycled. He'd been on the board a long time as, as I had at that point. And that would have been fifteen years ago probably, and I don't know how long we've been, you've been doing this twenty years or twenty more?
Me, I'll be twenty, twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's time to find some, uh, folks that, uh, have new tennis shoes.
Young people like Kevin.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
I do remember, I do remember, I do remember the Mob board, uh, it was. Uh, Linda Krasky and Monica Seabird were co-directors on their.
Who was that? Oh, yeah, Dot Phillips.
Yeah.
That was quite a group and they were, but they were young at the time.
Yes.
Probably in their fifties, I don't know.
Now, pre-board runs against some of that too, is, you know, your volunteers start to skew older and older all the time.
Well, that's the option. You can either, uh, have another birthday or not, uh, just send the Olympic tour and finish like that. Anything else that you might have that we can answer?
I, I don't think so. I think if we get us financial board, uh, that would help mentally.
Yeah.
What within the financial report are you looking for to make a determination?
Your, your, your incomes and your sources of incomes and your expense. And.
Not in kind.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if, if you have in-kind like hours that you're putting a value on. Make sure you identify those as in-kind, not as, as.
Not as part of the.
For cash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, that are cash.
Right.
Without, uh, half of Colorado walking along the beach when they're here vacationing and punching in their, their account number on their phones or the beach crew. I know the first month, I think we did over twenty thousand dollars in in-kind donations. That we could use to apply against our requests for funds from, uh, Department of Energy and. That was amazing to me and it still works.
And if there's something specific to that, Chris, uh, has a special project. I know one thing that we typically like to see or have seen in the past is having funded dollars attached to an actual project or a piece of equipment. Or an item, because then we can account to our taxpayers that, you know, ten thousand dollars went and bought this. I, they could physically see it. Uh, overhead is one of our hardest items to always want, especially for taxpayers, because it just goes into.
We have, um. This coming year, well, we're in it now, but until next year, twenty twenty-six, we're in the greatest American cleanup. Balloon, so it's a year and a half roughly. And that's, that is where most of our advertising, our education at the school level. And community information will be focused on. Because it's, it's, it's a national celebration of our country's birthday and we wanna make it as pretty and as clean here as we can. So there'll be cooperation and collaboration with other organizations. And we, the fact that I'm on the tree board and on this board, you know, we do, we do plant trees, they overlap. We celebrate together stewarding stations for our everyday. And it depends on who can get there, who's working that day, who's available, who's, who's not at somebody's birthday party for their, their, their year old, their three-year-old child. Uh, but I think, I think the great American, greatest American cleanup. Uh. Is probably one of the things that we're going to be stressing and, and, but I'll get, I'll give you more on that. I'm glad I had extra time because you.
You know, this is great, Rod, we appreciate it. It's, it's right, fifty years ago, you didn't have to go to the government to get money to clean up. I mean, just do it. You can clear your own property. You didn't, you didn't have to pay people to plant trees. I mean, they would do it because it was the right thing to do.
I mean, there's still ones of us that think that's the way things still are, but.
They're, they're, they're not. I mean, you're right. There, there are places that. We need western recyclers and we need Keith, Keith County Beautiful.
There are some folks who just need to be shown, this is what you can do with those four-foot weeds with a shovel.
Yeah. Problem is, we get to a point where we continue to do it for them, they won't good hurt themselves. It's what frustration does and it's like.
And we'll be addressing that later in the budget when we get to this.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, every, every organization that we've talked of tonight, uh. We're, we're filling a gap because. It's not happening when it's.
People aren't doing it themselves, then I wouldn't, uh, for a second watch your jobs. Any of them, yours, you just drive around in that pretty van, say hi to folks.
Not much, because I don't have forty thousand miles on it.
Okay.
Wow, Rod, you know, you and the volunteers, always much respect to you guys. I mean, I know Rod alone has been part of about every single committee there's ever been. Within the community.
Not true, but thank you.
I mean, as much as we can allow you to. But I mean, it doesn't matter if it's tree board, library board, uh, Keith County Beautiful, you know, the volunteerism is, I respect.
I agree. Uh, sure. Out of curiosity, being the new guy on the block here, um, as far as additional. Fundraising opportunities, have you guys ever looked into sectioning out certain areas of town or the county? And putting, you know, um. Basically collecting sponsorships from different businesses, you know, this area is cleaned up by such and such business.
Interesting thing. I think we, we played with that concept. Twelve, fifteen years ago, a little bit, uh. Kind of counterproductive to what we're, or counterintuitive perhaps is what I'm trying to say. Or what we represent. Uh. If somebody's got a lousy looking yard, uh, we're drawing attention to it. Same thing happened with a, a tree. Picture of a tree in somebody's yard or a picture of a, a pretty garden or somebody had a lovely yard, so this is the yard of the week. That, those kinds of things come and go. Uh, I'm not sure that we've really given serious thought to that. But, uh, some interesting ideas. Sponsorships, uh, unfortunately sounds a whole lot like everybody else asking the same twenty or thirty businesses. To pay for something that they can no longer pay for.
Sure.
And, uh.
And I under, I understand that and it's a valid concern. I guess I was looking at it as. You could potentially solve two issues. One, a little bit of additional income streams from it and also it would. If used properly, could help with the volunteer aspect of it if, uh, business, you know, A, B, C. Sponsored this section of road and they also help find volunteers to clean up that area.
Uh, there's, there's, there's still the highway cleanup, uh. And you, you can drive through the countryside and see, uh, here's a, a blue sign that says this area, the next two miles are being cleaned up by, uh. Holyoke, FFA or whatever it is, uh, that's good recognition. I don't know if, maybe I'm the only person that actually reads those, and, and I'm sure there's some people that notice them, um. We do a lot of, of marketing and education already. And I don't know that that would make a, a world of difference with this particular organization. Not a bad idea though. Bring it up.
We did have memberships at one. We did have memberships at one time where we solicited, you know, business to, to donate monies to us and we encouraged their employees to help us with particular projects, you know, we would reach out to them. Unfortunately, it just doesn't really pay off much. Really didn't get much out of them. So, I don't, and we also talked about like neighborhoods, you know, like a cleanup in your neighborhood. So you don't like to kind of get, okay, this whole, this whole area, somebody take charges and we're gonna pick up, you know, in this area. We tried that at one time and it couldn't, didn't particularly go. So, I don't, we have tried a few things like that.
We sent letters to every business and even some individuals like fifteen, twenty years back. And would like to get your truck kind of crying stopper bill in the mail, you know, everybody gets that. That was kind of what we did. And we did get some response from them, but it just waned all the time because.
Unfortunately, what you have is you, you have a limited pool of, of community dedicated, community-minded people. And you're always, every organization is hitting the same people. So that, that the hammer hits the same nail enough times to the time they stopped answering the call. And I think that some of that's happened in our town, um. We're open to any suggestions that you might have. We've tried a lot of different things. And the easiest for me to say is, and, and tell the, the Department of Energy, Water Energy and, and whatever the.
Environment.
Environment, whatever they decided to change the name to this time, uh, when that pool of money dries up completely, then uh, not only we, will we be hurting, but so will everybody else in the state. And funds have already started.
Have you, have you heard, um, funds cut, your funds getting cut?
Uh, we expect our funds to be cut every year from, from Lincoln. That's why we're very active.
Well, ours, ours are too.
That's why she's playing golf with the senator today instead of being here. She was involved with that fundraiser for a month before we were asked to come here today. I know I've done a great job boring you half to death, and I'm glad that I've got two friends back here answering some questions. We'll get some more information to you. I thank you for your time. Do you have any other questions? Call Jerry because she does seem really.
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
No one's got that much schedule.
Alright.
Oh, yeah.
Well, my, my, my organizations, we heard tonight, uh, last year we funded thirty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, this year the request is eighty-two thousand. That's a big job.
Huge.
You know, it could even, um, keep Keith counting, could also benefit from maybe a contract specific tied to funds for specific things in Ogalala. Maybe in type funding too, like we do with W R G.
Yeah, I'm, I would really like to see W R G and keep Keith County Beautiful. What they answered and.
There's, there's, there's a rip between those two.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, and I, I, I seen Keith Keith County Beautiful's financials, saw it probably about six months ago, and it's it's very hard to look at. Uh, there, there's, there's transactions on there that just doesn't line up the way, the way it should be. Chris paid herself two or three days in a row. Couple of big paychecks and says, six months ago she embarrassed herself, she was, she was catching back up and it's, it's a very difficult financial look at.
Yeah. I've, I've heard that from several. Which, which organization?
That's why I think it's always important, you know, I know some groups don't like us to ask for financials across the board. And we just, we ask for them. It just helps too, especially because they're taxpayer funds to make sure it's going to what exactly we know. And I think, gosh, how many years has it been now since we've really tried to tie stuff to specific things? Or, because then we thought, you know, uh, the thought was a couple of years back is the more we try to tie to specific things. Let's say if somebody in the community comes and asks us and says, hey, where did my money go with this? We can sit there and say, that piece of concrete, uh, uh, those park entries, uh, this thing in the park. And it's not just, overhead is so hard to quantify based on financials so often. And there are exceptions, but it's just, it's so hard.
Yeah, we actually request where the money's going and there's supposed to.
I, yeah.
I agree with you.
You know, and and I know that there are, there are costs in operations. You gotta pay your employees, uh, you know, and you gotta pay rent, you gotta pay utilities and stuff, but that's what we want to see. I mean, if those are insorbent and we, you know, we, we, we may have some suggestions. Uh, or, you know, maybe the board has some suggestions for, uh, what's concerning is when, you know, three board members come in. You know, they, they don't have no grants.
Staff has observed Dustin's point that he made. Uh, in addition, what we are doing is we're following up and looking at their nine-nineties to make sure that they're nonprofit, they're filing their nonprofits. That has also been a challenge of at least one of our requests.
Yeah.
That, that they've gotten caught up on, but.
I will say when Chris got the twenty-five-hundred-dollar funding that we approved last year at the beginning part of this year, that was what, March, April? She was, she was very upset. She was saying, well, they're gonna have to get rid of the office. She's gonna have to work from home because they can't afford the office there, but here, here we are, three or four months later, and they're, they're still finding a way to make it, make against me, so.
Who's in the office?
Just, just Chris herself. She's got her own office right there on Spurs.
And you know, I don't mean to be crass about it. I mean, is she, is she doing Republican Party's work out of there or is she doing?
I, I, I think, I, I think there's a little bit of that going on too, or maybe a good part of it. It's what I don't understand is if you have an office, he's got a, a good sized table, she can bring a couple more chairs, but why are your board meetings being held at a different location rather than in that office?
It's a good question.
Where are they at? The board meetings? Is that the Highland, Highland Yolene?
County.
The county.
Your conference room.
I'm sorry, Ed, were you here for your West Central's contract or just want to participate?
No, I'm a nerd. If you'd like me to talk about West Central, I, I would.
We bet you that.
Be pleased to tell you that, uh, we need more money too, just that's why.
And you, you're pleased to tell us that?
I am pleased to say that.
Gravel Stipers for Brownfield.
You did, and it was holy cat.
Did you go?
We have a lot to talk about.
Oh, good.
A lot.
You know, sometimes I think what is, is always hard, um, we used to talk about this quite a few years ago, so this is the perfect time to have a conversation is, sometimes it's difficult to to separate out Keith County versus Ogalala spending when it comes to requests. Because especially when you're dealing with Ogalala's citizens, they're getting taxed twice for every recommendation. So you're paying for the county requests and you're paying for the city requests. If you live in the county, you're only paying, you're not paying for city requests.
Yeah, appeals out. Right.
And that's one of the hard things that we run into is which organizations truly benefit the city? Because the county should take care of the whole town, which includes Ogalala because Ogalala's part of the county. Ogalala should take care of the city itself by making sure our funding stays within the city and not surrounding. Because their Ogalala taxpayers pay in those.
Yeah. That's, that's tough, you know, when you're funding things and and, you know, that are, you know, working in rural, they're working in Paxton or, I mean, rural areas and it, but it, unfortunately, it's, it is what it is. They, uh, we, we do need there. You know, look out for best interest for our community.
We had a really hard discussion last year on, uh, the senior center. I know we were all here when they're talking about.
It happened, they didn't, they didn't submit anything.
They all got letters.
Who?
The senior center, speaking of them.
Can I jump in and visit about the Sand Hills crisis? It's an overwhelmingly expensive program, it seems to me. They have an operating budget of three hundred thousand. And they had a hun, they had so far a hundred and fifty something clients. That's an average of two thousand dollars per client that comes through there. And when you look at all services rendered, which could be rather minor to somewhat extensive, each service is averaging four hundred and seven dollars.
Uh, once we get their financials too, that's, it's always, uh, good to see. Because I think the, was it last year or the year before, a lot of it is the, um, the boarding. There's a lot of boarding cost that eats up that budget really quickly.
And I will, with that.
Yeah, this, this is.
Yeah, and with that statement, I will say it is required by the state. So obviously, it's required.
Yeah, I was gonna ask me, it's like, if a penny is not there, what do you do?
Alright.
I mean, the state requires it, but they're not paying for, but they're not paying for it.
I think it's looked then at, I know, I think Amanda when she was in here two years ago, you know, you have to look at then cutting services, like how many services, those extras that you're still providing. But that's also hard because the state mandates so many of those services be provided, but they don't want to pay for. And that's what's, it gets really difficult on a place like Skip.
You know, it, it, yeah, and it would be, we can't do it in fifteen minutes. But, you know, you want to ask him like, what does it cost you to go to Arthur and what does it cost you to go to this county or Oshkosh? Can you cut those counties off?
You kind of touched on.
Do you, I mean, what do you do about staffing then? Uh, do we need all staff?
Yeah.
Uh.
No, it's a hard one. I'm just dealing with conversations with them in the past. Like they were talking, you know, it's, burnout's a serious thing because you're, you're never dealing with a lot of the happies. You know, it's, uh, kind of like your, your counselors and stuff that deal with, you know, they use trauma, stuff like that. You don't have a lot of wins. Like sometimes they go through it, but you're literally dealing all the time with trauma. And so as a provider, it builds up, and that's why you see a lot of people, they need a lot of volunteers because you need a break. You see that police officers, you know, fire department, you have a few things that are like, yeah, you know, we did good, but there's just a lot of sadness and hardship when it comes to what they do. And that's hard to put dollar values on because the state's just looking at it as a per person deal.
Every one of these organizations does a great job. They, they have a great program going, uh, and it's just.
Well, it's services we cannot provide efficiently, singly but as a city as a whole.
Right.
And that's, that's the reason that we have.
But it is, you know, it is, and like our emergency medical services, you know, they started talking about, well, we can go to Oshkosh, you know, we can go to this county, we can go up to Grant County. It's like, why don't we focus on Ogalala, Keith County? Uh, and then, you know, we, during our operation, we aren't going uphill on getting, uh, EMS barn built, uh, you know, that may be considered a good some expansion.
And maybe too, like we're talking with, um, Skip, you know, I do like where we're trying to go with a lot of these contracts. Because then you're, you're literally paying for specific service every time. And maybe Skip, we look and see, can we tie something to the amount of service provided just in Ogalala and that breakout? Um, you know, what, what that looks like. And then every year we can go back to look at that number versus what we're providing to, if some dollar.
They should have it based on, you know, what the report is, you know, they have the, the services rendered in each county or.
They haven't broke down by county according to this.
It's not to say they don't have it broke down to Ogalala. I think they have it last, from whatever.
You know, if something happens in, in rural or Paxton, they're not gonna lodge in. In rural.
Right.
They're gonna bring it in. Here, so, uh, yeah, maybe it, maybe they need some people with some business acumen to sit down with them and say, have you ever thought about doing this instead, instead of renting a hotel? How about, how about we buy a safe house? And buy it. And put it in there, you know, keep it secured.
Use it then.
I know.
Uh huh.
They did. Uh.
Well, everything's gone up. I mean, just from what I was a couple of years ago, for their, with some of the agreements with the hotels, things like that, you get a discounted rate. I, I think it's what, our Holiday Inn is one of the busiest Holiday Inns, board work, uh, with occupancy rate like consistently high. There's just, the options are changing and the cost just goes up.
I suspect Skip is, is probably requiring through court system, I guess. Which, you know, should be funded by the county.
There are just things like that where you it, it's, it's good we have the program, but it's sad to see how we, it's, but you want people to be able to use it that need it. And, but it's just always a sad because you just, you look at the numbers and these are people that need and deal with, you know, all that stuff and serving.
It is, it is. We need to need to work on getting the people off the program too.
No, I was gonna join my question. What's the root cause of this? Because if we can fund getting, mitigating the root cause, maybe that's the better investment.
Uh, we have agendas for the next budget.
For jobs.
Yeah. Are we?
It will come out in the departments.
Are we getting, uh, like anything from Chamber yet or?
The chamber, you, they sent us a contract. We added a couple of clauses to that contract that they're disputing.
Yeah, they asked to table that.
And so we're, we're, that was gonna be on your agenda tonight. They've asked that that be tabled until we can work through those two specific issues. Um, in going with that contract, since, since a lot of it is, is related to the management of Rondavee Square, I put a maintenance um, statement in there that, you know, they just take care of all the minor maintenance like we do with the YMCA and
Sure.
Thousand dollars, right? Uh, and then they had some heartburn with the city manager needing to initial off on what was going on around the new square. And that was, that was basically just so that we know what's going on on our property. It wasn't to mic, it's not to micromanage or tell them what they can and can't do. So those are the two things that, that, that I think they want to meet with me later to work through.
Yeah, I remember a few years back when Chamber rented it out to a wedding venue dance and, and you're then yeah, inform the city and they didn't, they didn't go.
They closed down the road.
Yeah, they closed it down and the city didn't know about it and that was not good. So that's a, that's a.
We, we need to know what's going on.
Yes.
Um, can I just ask a curious question? Because I've never been on the chamber side, so just a general question. So even like Sands on the Square, if we get the, we did Sands on the Square, we have four, it used to be six. So do we happen to know what the value that the city gets for a bend? On the, so like.
Like, can I kind of make impact analysis?
Correct. Or versus like, so.
It's all my calculations on Legion Field.
Yeah, so it's like four, if we have four, we're paying twenty grand. What if we had two for ten? Like, are we really hurting anything? Uh, and that, I mean, those as we're looking at budget and numbers, it's like, what is the impact of changing the amount? Maybe you have some things.
The contract, the, the proposed contract addresses that because it cuts the reimbursable expenses on the, on the sounds down to ten thousand. It ups the management agreement and just general chamber activity up to seventeen-five. And then throws in six thousand because they're willing to take on fireworks and fifteen hundred dollars for fundraising, which is what we were budgeting before. So it contains our, the, the agreement contains our fireworks costs. Because last year our fireworks costs were probably thirteen, fourteen thousand.
And we're actually saving money, right?
Saving money there, um. The way the contract. The way the contract is written, it's a little vague as to whether or not they get the rental income, we'd never, we budget rental income on that with. Ronda Blue Square, I don't think we've gotten any rental income to speak of.
Well, we raised the rates after the.
They're, they're allowed to have sponsorships, I mean, the Ronda Blue Square, they can, if they, if, if I were a chamberer. And I had access to that piece, that asset to market my organization and use it as a fundraising venue. That's, it's not a bad deal, all we're asking them to do is don't, you know, I, I don't wanna be bothered with every outlet that doesn't work. Or a, a tear on a curtain, and, and if you're responsible for the minor stuff. You're have to take care of it better and maybe collect a deposit to make sure it's, it gets taken care of. So that's the rationale in that.
I had a question, if, if they, it's, it's not really spelled out in the contract, if they keep the revenue for the rent. So for the, it, this is a nonprofit organization. But should the contract state something to the effect that? They have to follow our fee schedule or, because that was the whole reason we, we raised our fees. So that, that you didn't have people come in and trash.
I think the fee schedule still applies for a, for any, any entity that's not a community organization. But I did, you're right.
But if you, yeah, if you're gonna allow them to keep the revenue, it would kind of was a follow that they can set their own rates and then they could.
With private.
They pay us that and they keep whatever above, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I, I'm not saying that's a problem that they keep the revenue, I'm just saying, it, it should be somehow set so that the, it's our property, the. City council sets how much the rates are and that's what they have to. Or else we're gonna have.
Well, we also don't want them, you know, want them competing with private, with a private thing.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have now what Willow and Oak and we're gonna have a casino and. We wanted rented two others.
So as part of that contract, are they gonna be responsible for uh, the upkeep of Ronda Blue Square?
And that, that's worth a thousand, well, that, I want them to pay for any repairs less than about, no.
My question is that, that Mr. System that was put in two years ago, never been used.
That Mr. System, we have written off. So as far as city goes, and we, we have, we have offered to file a claim, we kept a claim open for two years, waiting for them to get us a repair estimate. It never came, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't exist. Now, if they wanna do something with it, that's, that's, that's on them.
Yeah, it was a nice thought, but it's just a shame that. Nothing got done with it.
If you drop the maintenance from a thousand to five hundred, you think they'd take it?
I think it would make it more powerful, I think that would reduce their fear a little bit. I wouldn't have a problem doing that, I mean, the, 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 the goal is just. Is, if, if you have a little scale in the game, you're not, not at, you're not as apt to. You're apt to pay more and closer attention.
They would probably be. Open to that, but their main contention is they don't own the square, they don't lease the square.
Sure they do. Operated. Well, they're, it, the leases are costing them anything, but they're gonna manage it and operate it for it.
But, that, that's. I'm just touching saying, sure, discussions like that, I'm not sticking up for them one way or the other, but, you know, they, they don't. The city owns the squares, so. And, and uh. That's their contention, and, and maybe the five hundred dollars would, would soothe that. I visited with Kevin a little bit about that, you know, if, if that fee gets out of hand. There isn't anything saying that they can't come and talk about. You know, if it gets five, six, seven thousand dollars, then that's quite a bit of money out of that.
If it's, if it's, if to Austin's point, if it's a repair over, if it's five hundred and ten dollars, it's ours.
And I had that discussion with them cuz they asked about, what if it starts out three hundred dollars and goes twelve hundred, I said, we'll pay the twelve hundred, you don't pay.
Well, you know, at some point, if we're gonna be maintaining it, why the hell don't we just manage it ourselves?
We don't wanna get in the event business.
Cuz we're gonna be, maybe who's going in there.
We're just signing off and making sure that we know, we know who's going in.
Right, so we're not running the events.
But what is?
I'm not saying we would run the events, but someone, the Chamber would wanna do a free event, they'd have to lease the amounts, you know, we could do that.
It al- it almost seems to me that we really have to decide, do we want the square or do we wanna give them the square? That, I mean, it kinda has to be one or the other, we can't own it and then make them manage it, but we get the revenues and we set the rates like. Is it theirs or is it ours? And I, I don't like the idea, you know. If, if I heard that right, you know, pushing your rates so high because, you know, we have Willow and Oak and the casino coming in. All three of those have very different and appeal to very different clientele, you know? I, I guess I, I think the square is nice, I think it's a nice community. Opportunity, and I wanna see the community be able to use it, I don't wanna see it get to a point where it is just a really expensive park, well, I don't like that.
We could do a, we could lease it to him for, you know, I, I. I won't wanna give it to him, I would certainly keep the property, we could do a long term lease.
Like we do with Big Mac Sports Club, Heart of Bird Cabin.
Give him a, give him a, you know, a twenty year lease.
The lease would have to include that it's open to public parking when not in use for an event.
So would that number be? For the lease? Is the bucket or?
I think, they ma- they maintain everything.
Yeah, it's, it's theirs, it's theirs.
Then they get to set their rates on what it's used, and the only thing they need to check with the city on is closure of a road, which, you know. Is easier to deal with here without requests.
Which we have a process for.
Wouldn't that technically reduce how much we pay them every year as well, because they set their rates, they take all the revenue and.
Bingo.
And then they have as many events as they want, and then they get charged for those events, they keep their money, but they don't have to request like. For example, that's where I have sometimes. Harbor on like Sands on the Square, if it's an event, we're gonna charge people to get in there, why are we funding it when it should be funded by the people that go through?
They don't want, they don't.
Because we're, we're providing entertainment and, like, we provide parks. You know, we don't, we don't sponsor, we don't pay for like the baseball club to where, you know, people can go just watch the games free sometimes, they can go and pay for those events. I'm just, we're providing a community event all the time for free, and when we're looking at places that need funding, even within the city. It gets harder to say how much do we invest in entertainment? To where if that is a leasable option through the Chamber. They can hold events and charge for.
And that's count, the conversation counts from the block ahead, and you got, you got five thousand people paying for something that two hundred people went to.
And that's my, that's some of the times the areas that I run into, cuz if, let's say it's super popular. And you take five grand in, well, then that tells you how much you can spend on entertainment, if nobody's coming. And I, I know there's people that go, so don't draw on that, but. At what level is the city responsible, like, we're responsible for roads, we're responsible for, you know, well being? Are we truly responsible for entertainment, to provide banks that come in? Is that becoming, you know, something that we should actually be paying?
If you could use that analogy on. Those five requests we had tonight too, I mean, is it truly a?
But what I'm saying too is, like, Samuel's intervention isn't entertainment, you know, Western Resources isn't entertainment, so. Because those, it's the whole, we, we uses. I mean, it's like, it's hard to say. What? If we're driving business, let's say, so let's say the town makes. Eight thousand dollars off of every concert. Then we're supporting individual businesses, but we're not supporting ones on, on the hill, you only support those on the square. If it supports more businesses in town, how much does it truly bring in? Are we offsetting that and are we using taxpayers' funding? Correctly, and that's always been my point.
Here's the other challenge that we're up against on that particular piece, is we started this conversation in March, we revisited it in May. Uh, we're in budget workshops now, we've gotta close this budget on the twenty eighth, on the, by the next council meeting. We, we got, what's the schedule, Jamie, we've got till the fourth, to lock this thing down. So we, I mean, whatever they wanna do, they're gonna have to make up their mind, we, they, they, they presented us with the initial agreement, we added a couple of clauses to it. They rejected it. Ball's back in there for.
Is this a one year agreement?
It is one year.
It is. I would like to talk to them about leasing it to.
I'll, I'll bring it up. We, I'll, I'll present them the option of Big Ben, like Big Mac Sports.
Yeah, because then really, if they wanted to, really every single weekend throughout the summer, they can have small bands there to cover charge and make money off.
Hell, when there's storms.
We're not having to pay for concerts.
When a storm's coming in, they can rent spaces to park in there for two.
But if we can't close a long term lease with them right now this year, just duplicate what it was last year. It's a simple.
Yeah.
There was the budgetary impact, we could do a lease, Jamie. We can lease it anytime.
But we have to know if we have to budget it.
But we're spending money.
And I, I talked to Lana today. And because it was told to, I believe Kevin from one of the members, that they were having issues. With the fireworks, I said, don't do the fireworks. And she goes, no, no, we don't have a problem with the fireworks, so. A and B don't know.
I don't, yeah, I don't think it's a chamber, I think it's the, I think it's uh, Sean Rubik has problems with fireworks. He does, but.
But, you know, when, when they're not on the same page, that's just, you know, we're gonna take the fireworks out. And you just will go back to your twenty thousand for, you know, that contract that we did a few meetings ago. And then they're forty two hundred and uh. Call that A. But, I said, you can't.
Thank you.
Get my dally because we have to.
We can, yeah, they can, you know, they don't have, if we don't have a contract done, I mean, we can still get a budget through, we just. Make some adjustments on.
So you're saying that we could?
We could plug some numbers in there. If we did have a contract done, and then keep, keep working on this contract.
That would.
I was, you know, that, that. I really like the thought of just.
Well, thank you for dinner.
You bet. Hey, thanks Kevin.
I don't know, I just, especially with the. They get not negative on it, but there's been, there's been some concern. That has been brought up by citizens, it's like, you know. Like Austin, let's say we get together and we're like, hey, we should be able to sell.
Thank you guys.
Drink that shit.
We should be able to hold some alcohol.
Once we get down the road a bit.
For us to make money, we're not, we actually make money.
Now, the one thing we do with the alcohol though, is there's different, it's not yelp, but uh.
Yes, I have.
There's been, how many, James? Two or three, I mean, the Chamber hasn't. The yelps. Yeah, but, so they're not, they're not hogging the alcohol. That's what we're approving tonight.
Right.
That's what I mean, it's like, if we're gonna approve one group, I'll approve two. And pay you for entertainment, but if another group wants entertainment provided, where they can make money off.
You stopped at Walmart?
Oh. What?
Did you stop at Walmart?
I did, that's why it took me so long.
Alright. Just so you didn't miss it.
We went to a tourist meeting.
What? You're back.
Anyone whiskey talking, West is.
There's a few things, guys, just what's going on.
And we are live, so.
We have some concerns, um, in sewer department, where we're in, our cash balance is a little bit low. Just wanna make a note, we've had, like I've told you earlier, we've had to make some repairs while we're waiting on that money, but. The uh, SRF fund, certain state revolve fund. We have been told we're gonna get that money in, in. In October, so we're, we're putting that money in. This calendar year? This, this, this calendar year is supposed to be coming in October, so, but, we, we don't get it, we still have to make, we have, still have to keep a plan. So, we, we have some concerns in that fund, also just to note, and Jay's got kind of the numbers, uh. We are on schedule for this October to do another four percent entries on water and sewer. James got some history that she's looked at on, on, on those, when we raise that, the administrative fees do fine, but people conserve water. Uh, this year, we're down. Hundred and twenty five million gallons.
That was, no.
Four percent increase across the board to admin and rate.
Well, that's the thing, if you increase. If you, if you increase the admin and the rates at four percent. And then calculate what, based on prior year's usage, people typically conserve water. I mean, and so we, four percent doesn't turn into four percent.
Cuz I've done that this year, on the yard.
I have everybody's sound around this table, if everybody has done that this year.
Yeah. Cuz I know even, even with my yard, he man, he walk, he stay just on the skid, like sprinklers then.
I want green grass and.
And mine's green. I'm sure it loves it, I monitor it, I give it exactly what it needs, I don't just let it go like I used to, I used to set it for exact amount of time and it just run and run and run and. It would do it on a schedule, and now I'm managing it on my own.
Or you do it manually.
I hit the buttons, I put my times in, so then I can sit there and walk down and say, we had some rain, you say this day, I can give it this amount. I'm very, before I didn't care as much.
Four percent, was it?
I just got my water sprink, sprinkler installed last year this year. I got the greenest lawn, I swear, it's mostly weeds, but it's green.
When we did the rate study three years ago. We decided not to take the full recommended rate with the understanding that we do. I think it was a twenty percent, then do four, two, four percent increases, which still didn't get us to the thirty percent that the latest study recommend.
So, so I have, I have a history of assumption. Now, this is based on August through July from the last two years. And the consumption went down twenty five million gallons.
Wow.
For the same month.
The problem is. Previous city councils, they haven't raised rates for what, ten, fifteen years?
Rising rates every year.
Well, it not, uh, it's very, way, way back, they kept them way artificially low, we're so low. So, but we had a lot of budgetary expense on it, that's where we're upside down.
Yeah.
So I've honestly spent quite a bit of time looking at the water and sewer rates, and I've played with a couple of different ideas and. One of the ideas I really liked, kinda, I don't think we should pursue, at least right now. Um, one of the numbers I'm curious about is I don't know that we have enough. Differentiating price structure between, say, residential and commercial just across the board. I mean, I'm open to more input on that, but what I mean by that is. There's just not a, a big enough price gap in, in say specifically the sewer admin fee between residential and commercial. And. At about twenty two hundred meters in Oglala, say fifteen percent of those meters are commercial. If a, if, if a business were to just pay an extra twenty dollars a month, that's almost eighty thousand dollars. And I don't think an extra twenty dollars to a commercial service line is, is unreasonable at all. I mean, eighty thousand dollars a year moves the needle. And our, and from what I've seen, our issue isn't so much in the water side of things, the water department seems to be doing very well, if. If I'm honest, our issue is the sewer. And I almost wonder if we need to look at, again.
And I almost wonder if we need to look at, again, setting some serious difference. You know, separation there between residential and commercial. I just can't imagine. I am a business owner here in town and twenty dollars is not going to hurt.
Well, if you look at, depending on rate, you know, if a hotel is paying the same admin rate that a house is. A house of three to four people. Are we?
And the water, they are.
That's something to really take a look at, is you, you do have those business uses. Walmarts, your gas stations, they're flushing those toilets a lot.
Yeah, and I guess another idea, I don't have enough data to even speak on this, but, you know. Or an additional surcharge based on, um, the inlet size. I mean, the bigger those meters get, vastly more expensive they can come.
It is, isn't it? Don't rates, please, besides.
So. I've been looking at a few other things, like I said, it's kinda went down the rabbit hole. And just across the board, I think we need to have some higher rates for commercial. If I'm honest, I do think almost that, uh, hotels and motels should probably pay the highest. Followed by, um, commercial. And then somehow we gotta kinda figure out trailer parks that are on single meters. Because paying thirty one dollars a month for an admin fee is kind of insane.
Like we're going with that.
Again, caution that just within balance and within reason, because at the end of the day, there's kinda, there's. Less overall infrastructure on a single meter setup, but again, it's more expensive, there's more headaches.
Yep.
A lot more headaches.
The bill does get paid more regularly.
I agree. Well, and, it, you know, for commercial use. Uh, you know, car wash, uh, hotels and restaurants, I mean, that's just the cost of their inventory.
Got tool round business.
He's gotta wash his tools off, you know?
Hey, with the size of the drinks at the movie theater, you gotta pee a lot. That's why purposely don't get a drink. Like, I'll get food, but I won't get the drink, cause I hate missing out on that movie.
One of the things I kinda liked about. That idea spitting out is. I feel that it helps balance the scales and takes a little bit of the burden off of the everyday single family household. I mean, they're taking it in the shorts every which direction. And again, twenty bucks to a business, I don't think is problematic, I'll be honest. I would all, my first opinion is I would like to see us look more at revenue than doing another increase.
Keep in mind, this four percent just gets us to where we should have been. Three years ago. That, the, the four percent we're about to take. I do agree that in terms of the structure, that we need to re- reevaluate. The distribution of impact, uh, as it relates between residential, commercial, high, higher usage. Commercial. In food processing towns, they used to lower the rate for industrial. That's, they don't, that's, nobody does that anymore because water, because of water shortage. They're actually raising the rates for high consumers. We have, and so we're, we're, I think, I, I think our, our structure is dated. And needs to be reevaluated, like Chris said.
Well, I think, I think you're right, Kevin, cause. I mean, this, this is over twenty some years ago, but I think our water rates were cheaper. The more you use, the cheaper it got. And that's where, that's where we took it to, let's go flat. And then the rates, but you're right, the, you know, because the hotels, the, the car washes, the high users.
That was our incentive.
But right now, you know, it, putting demand on us for more wells.
What about looking at like doing a tier setup, like if the business uses X amount, X amount. That puts in a higher tier, they, they get an additional twenty dollar administrative fee. But if, there is a tier that, if there's another business that just paid barely one tier lower, then well, it's a fifteen dollar administrative foul.
I have seen that tiered rate model used in Colorado, no matter whether it was residential or industrial. If you were, the higher, the higher you went up, the more you, the more your consumption be. And we did. Change point, so that's, that's.
We, we did look at doing that years back and the top. Like, from, from what, I can't remember what the threshold was of accounts, I said this was probably back. You were probably city manager. Cause it was maintaining, he shouldn't was, she was leading this, but the, the higher cost was twenty. The majority of it was the city with the parks. Once, once we, once we pulled out, there's, there, there really wasn't.
A whole lot.
Of the lot. Was a couple residential that.
Right.
Were highly overusing.
Actually, sorry.
But, but you know, if you're just talking just commercial, that'd be a different story. We were looking at all users based on the consumption.
The only, only piece I wanna be careful on, and kind of issue extreme caution. When you look at commercial accounts, they don't operate under the same rules as residential. And specifically what I mean by that in regards to sewer is for all residential homes, we take their usage reading in February. And we assign that as their sewer rate for the rest of the year.
January, February, March average.
Oh, thank you. Uh, commercial, so, we can't do that. And so they. You do for some, but in most cases, right, you don't.
If they have grass, if it's a commercial property with grass. That they, that they're watering a lawn, then they, it's called commercial winter rates, and then they have the average of January, February, March, just like a residential.
I did not know that.
I didn't do it for, I guess, I know.
Well, twenty six of my years.
I'd like to see a more detailed report on that if possible, see what businesses.
Don't have individual businesses.
Um, cause that was one thing, we just wanna be careful about, cause I do know some. I'll, I'll put it this way, I know one business that is locked in sewer. And it's the RV, the RV parts, they can't wait. And that, they would not, city would not allow them to average it, so they pump acres of water on their grass. And they have to pay for that through the sewer. And.
Right, isn't that just outside of city limits, they can't wait?
No, one of them's in city limits, the other one is just outside. That's just.
And they're watering the grass and they were told they couldn't do commercial winter raids?
They were told they would have to buy a digital electronic meter to put on every hydrant that is used to water grass, which is about twelve hydrants. Six hundred bucks a pop times twelve, it's.
But one meter, right? They don't have an irrigate either. They're, he's saying there isn't an irrigation, so they would have to meter each hydrant.
Yeah, cause it's spread over, say, about eight acres.
Is there one meter that feeds every irrigation hydrant?
There's one meter feeds entire. One meter that feeds everything. I don't think you're understanding that there's one meter to the entire property. So every gallon, every gallon that is pumped is metered and charged. Whether that's dumped on grass or gets utilized and actually goes through the sewer system.
So they should, they could be set up at commercial winter rates and their, so it would be average of January, February, March, who they talk to.
But they are, they are paying for water, they.
No, they're on their own wealth.
Oh.
You see that?
And they have a meter for their wealth that's feeding the property.
To count, so they have.
Like the sewer.
Right. So every gallon that's pumped is charged to the sewer. It's not averaged down.
We can fix that.
If it's, if it's a, if it's a, let me just clarify, if that's a one off situation, I apologize for even bringing this up. My understanding was that's how all commercial accounts operate better.
You have the address to that?
Two twenty one road, these eight five.
Have you been out there?
Yeah.
Just checking to see if there's a meeting tonight.
There is.
Well, I gotta get take my dog home, cause she doesn't like meetings. I'll be back.
I really.
Bye, hon.
I appreciate that info. I thought that was how all commercial accounts worked. That's something.
Well, other things, uh, other, other than the, the budget timelines, maybe everybody got questions on that. Jane's got those available. Uh, and she has plugged some numbers, preliminary numbers into the new budget worksheet. And we're cautiously optimistic. With what we're seeing. We don't, we don't have. We don't have the stuff from the county, we don't have, please, no pink word.
Uh, I, what I did was I put last year's budget into the new budget work, work. Sheets, or the document, the new budget document. And not a whole lot of difference, but some of the, some of the definitions have changed, I understand. So like allowable growth is gonna be catch with a different from the county, so until we get that. In August, later this, you know, that's gonna be before we know it, August twentieth. And then we can put it into document, kinda get a better idea.
So we may not have, have a pink.
Does, I, I.
That's more based on the county, isn't it?
No, it's, it's what the city sets our level of. As long as we stay within our allowable gross percentage.
And everybody, he has to do that county, city and.
If you go over.
We go, yeah, we. We have not had to do that.
We did not. The first year, it was terrible. That was before they made council go.
Thank you.
The, the first.
That's my first year here.
So are we looking at having to do an increase in taxes fast? Or we don't?
Right now, we, we don't, we don't have it plugged into the budget for an increase of tax. There's a lot to be cut in order to not do that.
So the levy would actually go down.
Until, until we get our value.
They will, assuming valuation.
Yeah.
So, I need to clarify, because I've not been able to find anything. Is there currently a, a, excuse me, an additional half cent sales tax? Built into the city?
Well, there, there is a whole communal option, which pays. Fifty five percent into the hospital, two hundred and twelve thousand into eight, L B eight forty.
Two hundred and thirty.
Two hundred and thirty and the L B eight forty. And then any remaining balance goes in to general.
Okay, so this is not an additional tax, like what we wanna do with the infrastructure?
No, no, the, the local, the, we have had a set, the Oglala has had its half cent sales tax. It was first for the hospital.
Okay, one and a half cent sales tax.
Right.
So the first percent goes straight to the city for property tax relief is how it was advertised.
So when did that half cent option go into effect? Was that?
To do the additional up to two percent, you mean?
No, no, from the one to the one.
It's been, it's been.
I think it was eighty nine.
It was, it was renewed. It, 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 it has to be, it's up for renew again in twenty twenty nine. And it was a fifteen year.
He's asking when it was originally, like authorized by.
See, that's what throws me off with it.
You gotta renew it every fif- fif- in your ten or fifteen years, whatever, however it's voted.
It was done for the hospital.
But first it was done for the hospital, I think that was in the eighties.
Yeah.
I have a PowerPoint that describes all that.
And so there's, there's the one, one percent that. Half percent was. For the hospital, who may add, does that have to be done by resolution?
The, the taking it to a vote of the people has to be passed by resolution. And then there's a, there's an election.
And there's been some discussion within that half cent sales tax about modifying the L B eight forty portion, which has its own voter approved plan.
So is it possible in this budget, and I have been able to find it, where it just shows a separate line item for that half percent?
It's, it's spread out through the, your whole budget.
It is. It's one, it's one line item, but it includes the entire one and a half.
Guess what I'm getting at, it'd be nice to know exactly how much money are we bringing in on one percent and how much are we bringing in on the half percent?
We figured on the half percent when we looked at the, when we looked at the infrastructure tail, sales tax, that was about seven hundred and fifty dollars.
There, there is ways, uh. Is there? Towards the end of the diet. You know, look to revenues, um. If you look on page.
Took that one half.
You're looking in the new book?
Yeah.
Here, let me have my spreadsheet up, this is how the distribution works.
If you look, here's what, I'd look on page sixty four and it's line, uh, thirty one, one hundred. It's, no.
Thirty, yeah, thirty one and hundred. The general property tax, one point five million. So one million of it goes, right in the city, have a million, it'll be that one percent.
That's the sales tax.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's a sales.
Three point four.
Yeah, the two point.
Two point five.
Yeah, two point five is three. Is that the one percent or is that?
One and a half.
One and a half, that's the total. Of that amount. Sixty six percent, yeah, sixty six percent would go to the city, or you'll go. To.
The third is split up.
It's split, yeah.
Economic development, the hospital, and then general.
Yeah, what does the hospital use it?
The hospital is for the hospital authority and they use it for capital improvements. I don't know, I would Steve was here then.
Yeah. Thank you for that information.
So Austin, if you look at the spreadsheet, this shows you the, it's the current fiscal year, but I see my shades on the very first column are odd.
It's blurry, is it my eyes? Okay.
Keep in mind, column A is all off a year. I didn't realize that. It's twenty four, twenty five. So that, that column C is what goes to the, goes to the hospital, column E is what goes to L B eight forty.
Maybe four is half at two thirty.
Yes.
Two.
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
Thank you.
I thought it was two eighty. And then it's always twinging what agency is.
That's like, sort of like a, a department, a non-department department, like stuff like, like we put many in there that's gonna go straight out to somebody else. So we put many in there that's gonna go to. To like the school or to the hospital.
A non, a non department.
Well, like that, third, that, that thirty three percent of that half cent sales tax that goes to the hospital authority.
So that's the hundred and eighty eight thousand to the hospital.
Been some early warning, trying to get.
Hundred and eighty eight thousand to the hospital was part of that, that sales tax.
Yeah.
And they're not taxed. What do we use to justify what we pay them? Is that spelled out somewhere?
It was in.
Thirty five percent?
Yeah, yeah.
It's twenty five percent, um, a half of that. So you take the one and a half percent so, divided by three, twenty five percent goes to the, goes to the hospital, thirty five percent goes to L B eight forty. And then the rest, including the first number that goes to.
Thank you.
The other thing to note, Austin, is, I think, if you're particular, we're doing something different this year in cost of living increases. Where we've aggregated all of the salaries and then divided. Where we aggregated all of the salaries and then divided that out, which will, will help with some of the. The wage disparities between one end of the scale and the other.
It ended up being sixty-four cents a person.
No matter how much you make. And so that's what they.
For the cost of living.
It's sixty-four cents.
If you average it from the.
From the top to the bottom and multiply it times two point five, divided it by twenty-eight.
Next dollar's great in that. Hey Jeff, did the projector on that side turned on?
Yep. So you're saying sixty-four cents per person per hour?
Yes.
So sixty-four cents.
Yeah, if you make a minimum wage, it's you're gonna get a dollar fifty raise, January first.
Correct.
This will be on top of that.
Uh, it just.
Well, that's one of the reasons we're doing it, is because.
And I, I, I get it, the job or. Obviously, a little more higher than minimum wage, but. It's just, uh. Maybe I should just go flip, flip herders for a living.
Instead of spinning pizzas, right?
All casinos, uh. Picking up a lot of. People. Uh, which should. Break the, plug it real loud.
It's not so much this, the wage, it's the show up on time differential, the bucket.
I think they're also set for random opening for, to be able to be there, that's gross. So don't show up at noon.
As long as it's not a phone up yet, they're waiting.
But I see Steve just pretend I don't see him, right?
That's the casino grand opening. It's just all, he texts me when you're losing. You got that speed? Once we're down to two.
I generally use the. Standard call.
Then I can go.
You, you get two and a half percent.
It is open for the public.
We got any invitations? Where it be?
It's open to the public, it's coming out of old.
And then most.
You're gonna get a two.
Race starts at three, the casino's at four.
You're not getting raised, that's funny to me.
So we can expect all pay tables to just jump? Four percent. Is it, is my accurate on that?
Uh, what are we looking at, probably call it a ten general, four percent, five percent?
Well, the max merit increase anyone can get is three percent.
He's looking globally.
Oh, I didn't look at that. Of course, with, obviously, we have water, sewer. They can't. Can't look what we fetched in last year and just calculate a percentage, cause those numbers are all out of. This water sewer rec center and other pool have no wages now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say.
Because using that one million on coal is gonna, is gonna.
Probably.
Some of that.
Right.
Because you're hundred thousand dollar people, not gonna get two percent.
But some of the others are gonna get more.
But the lower ones were. And then most everybody gets, they, they totalize for that three percent.
And then usually it's two to three, depending on how they store.
Well, we're all here, can I get a motion to adjourn? Is second by councilman here, Fullstein. The lowest in favor signify by bony.
The second, there, now we're ready.